I'd like to welcome the members of the audience to our board meeting. Thank you for coming. And with that, we'll get started. It is now six P M. And I call this meeting of the Fair Independent School District to order. Let the record show that according to board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Chapter five by one. Please stand.
Your Lord, thank you for bringing this group here together this evening. Thank you for the many blessings that you provide for us. Please continue to bless our students and keep them safe in our schools. And please help guide us in the decisions we make this evening. That we make decisions in the best interest of our community and our students. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. De Jong. Do I have a motion to approve amendments of September ninth, twenty twenty four, and October third, twenty twenty four? I have a motion by Mrs. Martinez. I have a second.
I second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carried. Seven zero. The next item is recognition about standing attendance at San Houston Elementary.
Just in time, Mr. De Jong. Hello, everyone. So today we want to recognize, um, we have a goal each six weeks of ninety-six percent attendance. And we had one campus meet that goal the six weeks. And so it was San Houston Elementary, so. If you end up, we do have, can you open up? We do have a banner that she's going to be able to display at the front of her school. So for the six weeks, last year our average was ninety-two and she had ninety-six for the whole six weeks. And so that's the banner that you'll put in front of your school, ma'am. Um, and we congratulate you. And those are her students. If we can go up and take a picture, if you'll come up, ma'am. And you can bring your students. Sure. And we can maybe put it across the front. We'll have to put it really back. Yes, you'd be a little polished there. Take a step back.
Congratulations, family.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. And I know you're welcome. Can I tell them? You're welcome to say, but you can.
Will you wanna hear something funny?
Yes.
I'm sharing with everyone. So ACE is having their little flag football games, right? And last week on Monday, it's a regular Monday after school and I couldn't at ten. So this Monday I told, uh, Mr. Norris, I said, yes, I'll be there. And I had already changed out into my jeans and my spirit shirt. And then it's like, I gotta be somewhere else. So the girls that were there from the front were laughing because I go, oh, now I'm gonna go change again.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Bye, ma'am, thank you.
Bye.
And congratulations again, ma'am.
Great job.
Thank you. I hope I can do it again for the second season.
Yes.
Okay, do you have anybody for public comments, sir? The first information item is announcement of board member continuing education credit hours.
So ma'am, these particular hours, Board President, do not include the required key building, the safety training that you have to do, the supper bowling. These are just the continuing education hours. The other hours are above and beyond that. So if you want to read through those, ma'am?
Okay. I will read the hours. Jay Castillo has twenty-nine point five. Katie Johnson, nineteen point seven five. Alno Martinez, twenty-three hours. Juan Briones, fifteen point twenty-five. Gloria Casas, fifteen point seven five. Tisa Montago, twenty-six point five. And Ruben Zambrano, eighteen point two five. Any questions, guys? Okay, the next item is discussion of superintendent performance goal one. Activity four, C T E student certification.
Good evening, Board President, Board members. So the superintendent performance goal reviewing tonight is honor student certifications. So part of the certifications is we want to increase from what we had the year before. So if you look at the numbers, and I did send a separate document so that you could have a larger copy. And so that went with, um, with your packet. But this year we had, or last year for the twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two hundred and forty-four compared to the previous year at two hundred and thirty-three certifications with C T E. I met with a couple of board members that, that had a couple of questions. And so one of the things we talked about is, um, that we, we went down in phlebotomy a little bit, but we had more certified medical assistants. And so it seems like this past year more were interested in the certified medical assistant. Went down a little bit in phlebotomy. We also had the AutoCAD that we didn't have last year, but it's back this year. So those were some changes. We added some of the law enforcement certifications because that is a great need now with the state requirement. And so we're getting more students that are getting that certificate. We also had more with our, with our photo, um, photo media. And so we had some skill-based there. And so if you look at the second page, some of the changes for this year is we've added a dental assistant certification program with our ACE. We did not have that, and this is something new. So some students are not able to take it throughout the school day. And so right now we have students that are through our ACE program getting the dental assistant. And that's not something that we offer during the day. It's actually, um, offered through one of our teachers, Ms. Young. She's a teacher that is able to teach that, and she does it after hours with our ACE program. We, um, changed up our culinary arts a little bit. And we, um, will not provide safe serve anymore because that's something almost when you go to a workplace, you're gonna get it. And we're changing it up a little bit there. We also, as I mentioned, the AutoCAD. We have students going for automotive and for firefighter, and that's something that they'll get certification. So we continue, um, to work on that. We found out today that the grant that we received, the half a million dollars for, um, cosmetology is open again. And so we will be looking at applying that and looking at another pathway that we can, we can apply for that money and expand that program. And so we'll be talking to high school principals, the teachers at the high school, and seeing where we can apply for that and what the specifications. Any questions about certifications? Yes, ma'am.
It says, for laudism, is it?
Phlebotomy, yes, ma'am.
We had, uh, twenty-nine seniors get certified or what?
Let me find where you are, ma'am. Okay, here it is. And so phlebotomy tech, we had a total of twenty, twenty-nine. And yes, ma'am, they were all seniors because, um, you have to be a senior to take that test. Yes, ma'am.
You know, we had, that's a whole bunch of kids that are going on with that ability to go and work.
And that was last year. Remember the yellows last year? But yes, we had twenty-nine.
And how many do we have this year? Or what, we don't know?
Yes, no, we know that this year we had a total of thirteen.
So that went down?
Right. Um, our certified medical assistant went up from, um, we had thirty-eight this year. And last year for certified medical assistance, let me tell you, we had, um, thirty-eight this year.
So they, I think you mentioned they, they went down.
It went up on the C M A. Yes, ma'am. So we still have the same number of students participating.
Is there, do you have any idea why?
Just the interest level. You had more students that were interested in getting the C M A than the, the other one, last year was twenty-two. So we went up from twenty-two to thirty-eight for the certified medical. So more were interested in that than phlebotomy, uh, that certification.
A C M A, a C M A can do phlebotomy also. Like, so if, if they have a C M A, they can do more things with it.
So that's, I guess I was bringing my second question. So does that mean they're certified for phlebotomy?
Yes, they can, they can do both.
They can still do it.
But I can see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is discussion of superintendent performance goal two. Activity two, the district facility committee.
So, um, activity goal two discussed, the superintendent will look at facility needs in the district. And so we created a committee that met first on May seventh, and we had twenty-eight in attendance. And we're trying to get a variety of different people. At our town hall that we had in August, we invited anyone that wants to be on this committee. And we're really pushing to try to get more people and more, more input. We had two walkthroughs on August ninth and August thirteenth, and we had a total of twenty-five in attendance with a combination of both. And then September seventeenth, we had a meeting and we had twenty-two in attendance. So our upcoming meetings, we have a student, um, facility committee that's coming up in two weeks. Not next week, but the following week. And we're asking students their input. What do you think that we need? Because we just want to know that as well. Then the first week of November, we're gonna be talking to the board to have a workshop on facilities. Our team has been meeting to talk about H vac needs, roofing needs, paving needs, um, just the basic things that we need. And so we have been working on that, and we will bring that to a workshop. Then the second or third week, we'll be meeting with the, with the facilities team again to discuss that as well. So that's what we're working on. Those are some upcoming meetings that we have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. De Jong. And the last item is discussion of superintendent performance goal five. Activity six, mental health.
Thank you, ma'am. So we, we brought up mental health and what we were doing at the August or September board meeting. And so today we're giving you a summary of what we're doing the first semester for students and staff to assist in promoting positive mental health. So resources, we talked briefly about this the last time. We have kits that we made for counselors, our school psychologists and social workers that take place and that they can total around, uh, tools that they need. We also purchased books, um, to use during restorative circles. We talked about that our administrators receive training in restorative circles. All of the staff, um, that our counseling staff received that. And so we're trying to be proactive with that and meeting the needs there. Staffing, we have systems in place for referrals. Before we came up with the, the mental health team and came up with the systems, we had a lot of things, but we were kind of scattered. And so now everything is a lot more organized. People know where to go to for specific things. We also have weekly meetings with the school psychologist and soco, social worker team to discuss referrals, how many we have. We have a mental health team with Mrs. Zambrano to collaborate with D A P team, um, meets. We have our interns, um, and that's a team that we're talking about, which is an L S S P, a social worker and a counselor, that are working with our students, and we did not have that additional help last year. New counselor training on procedures and requirements for cer, the circles that I discussed. The new counselors to the circle training, those were on November first and November first. We've had an autism parent training, um, that will take place October thirty-first and a social emotional night, November eighth. If you look at the next group, um, so the mental health team is serving fifty students across a different population. And I will be providing you, um, this week with the, how many students are first graders and second graders and third graders and so forth out of those fifty. But we are addressing fifty students across the district right now that we feel that are in need of some of this support. We have family group counseling. We had a, a specific student situation that we had the social worker discuss with the family, things that they could do to support the child. So it's not just working with the child, but it's also working with the families. Peer interest groups, we have autism parent support groups, work groups, um, conflict resolution groups. And so assist with, um, facilitation of the restor, restorative circles and D A P in collaboration with the counseling. And then training, we've had campus-wide training, positive behavior support, teacher consultants on behavior, R T I for behavior. And today during cabinet, we talked about another layer of behavior support that we're going to be adding. And, and I'll explain that at the next time that we talk about this. So trying to be a little more focused, meeting the needs in different ways, um, of all of our students. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, like simply, when the conflict resolution groups, that is for parents or for, for, for who?
Our students. And so.
And you haven't had that yet?
Yes, we have already been doing that.
So you have the numbers for that too?
The conflict resolution when we work with our students. So part of what we did in the month of August is we provided training to all of our students, talking to them about conflict resolution and bullying to every student.
And you did that in what form?
We did that through P E. We did that through counseling at our elementary small groups. We did that through our health. Now that we're offering health district-wide in the elementary, they, they had sessions specifically for that all the way up to, um, sixth grade. And then our junior high, we have a health teacher, and high school, we have a health teacher that we're discussing that.
Keeping their data up?
Yes, ma'am, because it's through the classes.
Through the class.
So that it's not just a hit or miss of some students. And so that was an initiative this year that we started is that everybody gets two lessons a month with the help. Because we're able to, the law for P E says we have to provide so many minutes of instruction of P E. So we're able to take out one day every two weeks and provide lessons like this during P E.
And for the parents?
And the parents, we had a session at night, um, on, on bullying and conflict resolution, what we can do. We also have one during the day.
And we have numbers for that too?
Yes, we do. And then tomorrow night, our migrant parents are having the same type of less, uh, same kind of topic.
I, I really think it's gonna be very important, see, this is, this is our initiative, our first year. You know, I, I think it's important that we give good data, uh, so that, you know, it, so that next year we know that we are in fact touching the community. That we are in fact having interest expressed by the community. Because we can have a class and what have you, but, you know. And so I think that data is gonna be extremely important. And, uh, the other thing I think is gonna be important is repeaters. Do we have people that come and they, they say, oh, my goodness, it's another one of those classes, let, let me go. That also shows that engagement from the community and the parents. Because, you know, if we do a hit or miss, we will never really know. And the other thing, I know that I had mentioned this to you before. I think it's gonna be important that we keep data if we have a reduction of kids quote-unquote acting up or whatever. Uh, I think that will also tell us that our program is, is making an impact. So I have, to me, data's gonna be extremely important, record-keeping for the activities that we're doing this year.
Any other questions?
Miss De Jong? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
There are four items on the consent agenda, the monthly tax report, the court of investment reports, the remote home bounce destruction, destruction waiver, sponsor statement for F C A, F C A fellowship of Christian athletes for twenty-four, twenty-five school year at William B. Green Junior High. Do you have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda?
I make a motion, Madam President.
I have a motion by Mrs. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. De Jong. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I will propose, say aye. Motion carried, seven zero. And now the first item to consider in possible action is discussion and approval of the independent auditors' report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo, and the board members. Item seven A is discussion approval of independent financial audit report. Matthew Motomayor, partner from Carver's and Ingram, uh, met with the finance committee last Friday to review the external audit, audit. Uh, he went over it in detail with the, and the results of the audit with the committee, and he is here to give a brief, uh, presentation to the board from twenty-two, twenty-four.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, William. Good evening, Board President, members of the board, superintendent. As earlier mentioned, my name is Matthew Motomayor, a partner with Carver's and Ingram. And I'm here today to present to you an overview of your audit report. Uh, you should have a copy of the boundary report in front of you, and I believe another one might have been emailed, a PDF version ahead of this meeting. I'm gonna go and do my best to summarize some of the information included in the audit report, which includes our independent auditors' opinions that we have issued, as well as cover some financial highlights. So, um, I tend to go on and ramble on about the, the flip-through pages. So if there's any time that you have a question, please feel free to stop me at any time, and I'll do my best to answer. But if we get started, we could go ahead and flip on over to, to page five of your boundary report. And you'll see at page five of the boundary report, that is our independent auditors' report. So we are engaged by the board to audit your financial statements of the district and render an opinion on whether or not your financial statements present parity in all material respects your financial condition. And we do that by obtaining sufficient appropriate audit evidence and doing risk assessment over your internal controls and gathering, doing incorporated sampling in some of the transactions that we look at. And the conclusion, we, we rendered an opinion on your financial statements. And the opinion up top, on the top of page five, is what we call an unmodified opinion that could be considered a clean opinion, something that you as a, as a board would be anticipating and wanting to receive. Uh, definitely one of the best opinions that you could receive as a result of the audit. So we did issue an unmodified opinion over your financial statements of the district. This auditors' report also covers information such as management responsibilities, which is basically to keep a clean set of books and records, and the auditor's responsibilities, which is to exercise professional judgment, identify and assess risk, and obtain an understanding of internal controls and other matters. Uh, continuing on in the independent auditors' report on page nine, there is certainly required supplementary information that is required to be included, as well as other supplementary information, uh, that's required by T E A. Though we do, um, review those supplemental schedules, and we've also issued an unmodified opinion that they present fairly, uh, in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements. There are two other reports that we did issue that I'm gonna go ahead and cover briefly. And those two other reports can be found in the back of your audit report. And let me just flip on over to that page. That page starts on page eighty-four. So on page eighty-four, we call this report our yellow book report. Since your audit is required to be performed in accordance with government auditing standards, uh, we're required to report on internal controls over financial reporting, as well as compliance and other matters. Uh, this report does not contain an opinion, but rather describes the results of testing internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. So what that means is if we identified any weaknesses in internal controls that we consider to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency, uh, we call those findings, those would be reported in this yellow book report. Uh, we're happy to report we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be a material weakness, nor did we report any significant deficiencies. The third and final report that I'm gonna cover starts on page eighty-eight. And that report is what we call a uniform guidance report. Since your district receives and expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards, you are required to have a, uh, single audit, a compliant, an audit over compliance with, with the way you spent those federal funds. And with, with grants, there's strings attached. You have to comply with certain compliance requirements, such as allowable costs or allowable activities, procurement or financial reporting. And we audit the major programs for compliance in regards to the uniform guidance. And the opinion that we did issue over compliance is also an unmodified opinion, uh, meaning that the district complied in all material respects with the type of compliance requirements identified in the uniform guidance. Further on in this, uh, uniform guidance report, also it covers report on internal controls over compliance, uh, similar to financial reporting in regards to the compliance, you have to have internal controls over the way you spend the funds or over the way you report, uh, to, to certain accounting agencies. And we have elevated those internal controls. And, and we did not identify any type of weaknesses that we consider to be a material weakness, nor did we report any significant deficiencies in internal controls over compliance. And that information that I just covered is all summarized on page ninety-three. So if you flip over to page ninety-three, you'll see that that is our schedule of findings and question costs. And that covers all the information that I just reported. Uh, during the year, the two major programs that we audited for compliance was your Title One grants to local educational agencies. That's your Title One Part A funds, as well as the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center's grant, that's your ACE grant. Uh, that was a new grant this year, and it was, it met the threshold requiring us to, to audit it for compliance. Next, I'm gonna go ahead and cover a little bit of financial information for, for the board. And I'm gonna go ahead and start on page seventeen and eighteen, which is part of your management discussion analysis section of your audit report. Now, management's discussion analysis section, I always describe that to board members, that, you know, this is a section of the report that provides a good narrative overview of the entire report. So if you didn't have a chance to read through, you know, all ninety-seven pages or some pages that it is, if you read the M D and A, you can get a basic understanding of the district and its financial condition. Uh, it has summarized, uh, financial information, as well as information over the district's capital assets, long-term debt, uh, as well as budgetary information as well. Uh, but the two schedules that I'm gonna focus on are on page seventeen and page eighteen. And for seventeen, that schedule is your net position summary. So your net position summary contains information such as the district's total assets, the total liabilities, and the difference between the two being your net position, similar to a balance sheet. Assets or items that the district owns, liabilities are the items that the district owes. And you can see for twenty twenty-four, the district's total assets were at fifty-eight point five million dollars. Those are down from the previous year, sixty-one point one million dollars, about a two-point-six million dollar decrease in total assets. Now, one of the main reasons for the decrease is, is in your current and other assets amount. And I believe that was related to, uh, certain receivables that you had last year for ESAR funding. And so since ESAR funding was predominantly spent in, in the prior year, in the current year, you had no more, you know, amounts due from state, uh, for, for those remaining funds. If you slide down and you look at total liabilities, you'll see total liabilities at the end of twenty twenty-four were forty-three point four million dollars, forty-six point two million dollars in the previous year. Uh, you have a decrease in total liabilities of about two-point-eight. And if you recall during twenty twenty-four, the district did not issue any long-term debt. Liabilities will fluctuate as you pay down current obligations or as you incur additional obligations. You can issue bonds, create, issue tax notes, or notes payable, things of that nature. You didn't issue any long-term debt during the year, so your liabilities, as expected, decreased from the previous year. And the difference between your total assets and deferred outflows of resources, your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, you're left with your total net position. And at the end of the year, that net position was twelve point three million dollars, an increase from the previous year, about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar increase. And to see how you got there, if you looked over on page eighteen, that is your schedule of changes in net position. So that will list the district's total revenues, as well as its total expenses and the net change, uh, in regards to total net position. So, and keep in mind that this, this schedule presents all of the district's funds all put together into one, um, at, at a government-wide basis. So your program revenues in twenty twenty-four, total revenues were forty-six point three million dollars. Uh, prior year, that was at forty-seven point nine million. So slight decrease, one-point-six million dollars in total revenues. Um, if you look line by line item under program revenues, you'll see that your grants and contributions amount decreased from the prior year. And again, that was because of, they're using up the remaining ESAR funds in the previous year and not having as much in twenty twenty-four. Uh, you'll see that your state and other grant revenue was sitting at twenty-six point three million dollars up from the previous years, uh, twenty-four point six. So your, your state allotment grants did increase from the previous year. Predominantly that was caused by, the district, if you recall, during twenty twenty-four, you reduced your tax rate. So when you reduce, reduce your tax rate, you have less of a local fund assignment, um, in, in, in funding the cost of educating students. So as a result of that, uh, T E A will, um, has more of a, a share of the allotment, uh, on the tier-two side. So, so that was one of the main reasons for the increase in your state allotment grant funds. You slide down, total expenses, you'll see total expenses for twenty twenty-four are forty-five point nine million dollars. And in twenty twenty-three, that amount was forty-three point nine million dollars. So total expenses increased about two-point-eight million dollars. And if you look line by line, and just overall, you'll see that a majority of your expenses, over fifty percent, is in instruction. And that's what the district is in the operation of, of, is providing instruction to, to your students. So that's predominantly where, where you have the most expenditures. Uh, line by line, you'll see one of the other big increases in total expenditures was in security and monitoring services. And we're seeing this across a lot of districts. A lot of districts are in. And we're seeing this across a lot of districts. A lot of districts are investing in security, uh, of the students. And, and, and your district is, is no exception. It showed that you did invest and, and have an increase in expenditures in the security monitoring, uh, during twenty twenty-four. Uh, but overall, you, the net change of your net position, your, your net position increased about three-hundred-eighty-seven, uh, thousand dollars throughout the year. So your revenues did exceed your expenditures and, and a government-wide total basis.
The, the other increase I see in there is the community services. What does that involve?
The ACE program.
No, please.
Because we started the ACE program this year and, and it was like a million one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar grant. That increased, uh, the community services.
That's correct. I got that one circled. Because that was a big one that I stuck out, but it was a new grant this year that, that, that the district did receive. Um, and then, so that's your overall financial summarized condensed financial information of the district. Now, if we turn and, and look at the general fund, and the general fund is the main operating fund in the district. That's where you, you know, budget for things like ADA growth, you budget for things like property tax revenue, state allotments. But you flip over to page twenty-six, you'll see that these are, these are your fund-level financial statements. The general fund is always presented independently because it is always considered a major fund of a district or a government. And you'll see that your general fund, total assets is sixteen point two million dollars, uh, liabilities about six-point-one million. And your total fund balance at the end of the year was nine-point-three million dollars in fund balance. Um, some of that fund balance is considered non-spendable in the form of inventories and prepaid items. And some of that fund balance is restricted for federal straight grant restrictions. And that restricted amount represents, uh, food service operations. Uh, the district accounts for its food so, food service operations in, in Fund One-O-One, uh, which is rolled into the general fund. And that fund balance is restricted for providing child nutrition operations. Uh, your unassigned fund balance is about eight-point-seven million dollars, uh, at the end of the year. Now, two measurements that I like to cover is, is to see, you know, how many months of operations do you have in unassigned fund balance? That's also a measure that TEA looks at in its first indicators. And another measure that TEA does look at in its first indicator is, you know, the number of days cash on hand. And, and so if we look at the number of days cash on hand, uh, when I calculated it, it came out to about ninety-seven days. Um, TEA's first indicator, uh, aims for above ninety days. And if you have above ninety days, you, you get the full amount of points, which is ten points. The lower you have days, you start reducing those points. But you're at ninety-seven days of above the ninety-day requirement, so you receive, should receive, uh, this first raider, uh, rating indicators of, of ten, ten points. This, they use it twenty twenty-four next year when they do the, the first rating calculation. Um, the other indicator that they do have is, uh, indicator number six, which is regarding fund balance. And, and so if your fund balance represents operating expenditures for the year of about seventy-five days, uh, you, you pass that, that indicated as a ceiling indicator. Uh, if you have under seventy-five days of operations in unassigned fund balance, the highest you could get is a B, I believe. Uh, the district have, uh, eighty-three point five days, so you're above that, that minimum amount, um, in, in, in unassigned fund balance. I think it's actually a little bit higher than that, uh, because I didn't take out capital outlet. But you're about eighty-five, ninety-day range in, in unassigned fund balance and operations. So, so well above the limit and, and that's what most governments and school districts aim to have. It's about two and a half months, three months of operations. And, and, and you're, you're above that, so.
So as a board, we, you know, the, you know, we like to keep those cash on hands above the ninety days to get the maximum points. And, and, and this year, we, you know, it was ninety-seven, ninety-eight days cash on hands.
So, so those are always the, the indicators that I like to point out because those are the most, um, those are, you know, gauged by and, and measured by TEA. And also just for, you know, financial, um, uh, liquidity and, and, and status, right, how the district kind of fares out for the year. But during the year, as I mentioned, your, your fund balance, um, was at ten-point-two million dollars in the previous year. And at the end of the current year, it's nine-point-three million dollars, a slight, like, decrease of about nine-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars in fund balance. Um, during the year, you had some one-time expenditures, um, for, I believe it was food service operations that you had in purchase of counters.
Yeah, and part of the scoreboard that, you know, the board approved was to use local funds last year's budget. That was incorporated into the budget, so that was, you know, the reduction to the, you know, to the overall fund balance.
Pretty much one-time expenditures that you have, um, in the year. But, but overall, you know, the, the district has, has shown and, and budgeted fairly well, um, to account for, you know, ESAR funds running out and going away. Right, because that's attacking a lot of, uh, Texas school districts throughout the state. Uh, is, is you have inflationary costs going up, ADA going down, and then you have ESAR funds running out. You know, those are, those are one-time, uh, funding that many districts receive and, and it wasn't meant to continue on, it was just no longer there. So, so a lot of districts are, are looking into the budgeting process and forecasting and ensuring that, you know, the financial condition is, is, uh, is good going forward. But, but overall, what, what I would say on the district's fund balance is you did have over, um, over the minimum amount for seventy-five days that TEA requires, and over ninety days of cash on hand as well.
Have any questions?
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mrs. Martinez. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mrs. Johnson. It's been moved and seconded to approve the independent auditors' report for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carried, seven zero. And thank you so much. Very good report. Thank you, sir. And I also like to thank the business department. I know they work very, very hard to get everything ready for then.
The business office actually, in the past, we've always got this done in November. And this is the first time, I think, we ever did it about a month ahead of time. And so.
And also I would thank the business staff. They did an awesome job in getting everything ready for the auditors. And, and yeah, I was to try and get it done in October and then, and we got that done, so we appreciate that.
Good job to everybody.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good night. The next item, this discussion made consideration to change the position from security director to chief of police.
So today, um, probably around three-thirty or four, we received notification from T-CO that, um, we were, we were accepted or, um, activation letter saying that we were approved for a police department. So tonight, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, it doesn't mean you get any, any extra money. We're just changing from the, but I do want to commend Mr. Ometo. He's done a lot of work in the last couple of months, um, to get this rolling. And so we are now officially, we could not call him chief of police, but the letter that we received today called him chief. And so it was official with them, but it needs to be official with you that on our compensation plan and our titles is just a title change from security director to chief of police. So we're making that recommendation, um, that we change that.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion, uh, that we move, that we approve the change, the position from security director to chief of police.
Do I have a second? A second by Mrs. Grassas. All those in fa- it's been moved and seconded to approve to change the position from security director to chief of police. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that we are extremely blessed. Uh, God works in mysterious ways and I know that he came to work with us in a different role, but God meant for you to be here. Uh, because I, I really truly feel, and I've heard it in the community a lot, that you're the perfect person for this position.
Uh huh.
So I want to thank you for staying with us. And I feel our kids are in very good hands. So, thank you so much and congratulations.
Yes.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carried, seven zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Uh, it is now, it is now, not ready, six-thirty-nine PM. And we are, we are moving into closed meeting, first one to Texas government chapter five, five. It is now seven oh five PM and we are now recoming to open session. Let the record show that the superintendent approved the retirement of Mr. Charlie Bravo. Any district announcements?
Yes, ma'am. Um, a couple of announcements. This Thursday, we have early release because of game and gruya. We will be dismissing, um, elementary schools at twelve and junior high and high school at twelve-thirty. And then we have no school on Friday. Pigskin is Saturday. I don't have the exact time. Do you know, Mr. Villanueva, what time we're marching?
The, pre, pre was at seven, but I don't know.
I know there's eight. I'll find out and I'll send that to you.
And the ferry marched around eight-thirty.
Okay. Um, neighborhood schools at Richard, it was scheduled for the twenty-second. We're going to have to reschedule because Sancho's had a literacy night, so I'll let you know about that. Um, we have a shack meeting on the twenty-eighth, if you're a part of that. A Monster Mash Candy Bash on the twenty-ninth. Right now, we're planning to have it outside. The community tailgate is November seventh in Lion Park Lot. And the fentanyl vaping is November twelfth, and I'll get you, please presenting. Any questions?
If there is no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to become down, and a second by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carried, seven zero. It is now seven oh six PM and this meeting is adjourned.